So, welcome, everybody. Here we are, another fantastic Zoom meeting. I don't know if this is ever going to change. It doesn't seem like it in the near future, anyway.
I'm waiting to hear the governor. So, the governor had extended executive orders that allowed boards to meet virtually. And I think it's extended to August 6th. So, we'll have to see, you know, whatever the regulations are. But I think you're right, Larry. I think he's going to extend it again.
Oh, yeah. I mean, and this tends to become the norm now more often than not. So, the only time I have trouble with this is when I have my extended family online, and there's just as many people and everybody's talking at once. I can't understand what the heck's going on. But, anyway. All right. So, we have one addition to the agenda, and that is the Governance Committee meeting notes. And that was suggested that that become part of the consent agenda. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, given that, with the consent agenda, including all that we have listed, plus the Governance Committee, looking for an approval, motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Russ? Joe, you're on mute, and Jenny's on mute. Did somebody second yet?
Joe will second.
Okay, Joe second. Okay.
Comes up.
All in favor, then? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Carried. All right, action items. We have some news and some reports from the Finance Committee. There was the Financial Statements to begin with.
Yeah, I guess. Ellen not being here, let me pitch in. We reviewed both the P and L and other statements, and the June claims, all this for June. We reviewed them, talked about them, and everything was approved. 2020 Budget Summary, basically, in a nutshell, we are doing fine. We are still in a good position. But budgetary-wise for 2020, we started to review the 2021 budget, and will obviously continue doing that in committee, and then be bringing it to the Board later in the year. Lisa Ido discussed that since our staffing, our expenses are the highest expense that we have, that she's looking into that to see what recommendations she may think of that might be needed. So, all in all, it was a good Finance Committee meeting. Nothing outlandish came out of it. So, I'll make a motion that we accept the June P and L Budget Statements and June Claims.
I'll second. It's Jenny.
Any discussion from anybody?
Okay. All right, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed and carried. Okay. Is there any? So, you did have the 2020 Budget Summary. And, I mean, it seems like we're still on track, for the most part.
Correct, we are. Even with everything going on, with that expenses for the COVID situation.
Yeah. Well, that's, I mean, that's good to see. I'm glad of that. Any comments about that? Any thoughts about, you know, looking ahead? We're still okay, it looks like?
Yeah, no, we are. We are still okay, and really not much discussion on any changes or alterations we need to make this year.
Right.
Just stay okay.
So, as you said, just likely to be next year?
Yep.
Okay. And you're working on it. Good idea. All right, good. All right. Then, we have reopening updates, and that, of course, is always at the forefront now. So, Lisa, I guess you can give us a kind of a rundown of where we stand so far?
Sure. We, I just ran some numbers. The first week, so we opened our lobby to pick up holds on July 10th. But if I don't look at July 10th or July 11th, but I start with the following Monday, we had 532 people that came through the doors to pick up their holds.
Good.
Yep. On a busy day, normally, like a busy Monday, we would see between 400 and 600 people a day on a Monday. So, to have 532 people for a week was, it's good that they were coming in, but our, you know, our numbers, of course, are low. I think it is ticking up. I ran it for that week of the 13th, and then the following week. So, it looks like there were 30 more people. We are now filling holds from other libraries. And I just got off the phone with Finger Lakes. Starting the 17th, we're going to be getting deliveries three days a week. You know, we're the second busiest library in the system. We, in a normal year, we typically loan out about 8,000 items to other libraries. So, that's a lot. We have, our holds list yesterday was about 16 pages, and it's about 20 pages today. And I actually called Finger Lakes because we're still only doing the single delivery on Fridays. And I don't know, we already have 10 bags to go to Finger Lakes, and that was as of this morning. So, by the time we get to Friday, I'm worried we're going to have so many bags that Tom, he has to manage the weight limit for the van, and he might not be able to pick up all of them. So, Sarah's going to check back with me tomorrow and see if Tom could come in and just do a second pickup this week, just because we have so many holds that are going to other libraries. But people are happy. We really haven't had any problems with people wearing, you know, asking people to wear masks. There hasn't been a kick-up at all. Mostly, people want to know when they could come in the rest of the building. And so, that's really what we have to work on now. What does that look like? On the staff's side of things, you know, there's a lot of change, and people having to react to changes all the time. So, you know, today quarantining is 72 hours, but tomorrow it's 96 hours. Or, you know, this little change, it just changes the procedures. And it's a lot to ask people to keep balancing that. So, I'd really like to spend the next two or three weeks just maintaining. And the other part of this is that we have two teams. So, we have a group of people that work together every other week, Team A and Team B. So, you know, you would work this week, you get used to what's happening, then you're not here for a week, and then you come back, and there's extra changes. Or, you know, so there's all this, instead of having one delivery week, we're going to, you know, by the time this group comes back, we'll have three deliveries a week. So, I just think we need a little bit of time to settle and shore up all of our procedures. And then, you know, keep looking ahead to, okay, how are we going to allow library customers to use computers? How are we going to open the building? Where are we going to quarantine materials? I don't think we're going to be able to keep doing it in the old lobby. So, that's part of how I think about reopening.
Physical space.
Yeah.
Will be a challenge. I know that we spoke about that a bit in our Building Committee meeting. And you do have, you do now have storage space because you're, because specifically to house the mantle. So, that's a climate-controlled space.
Right.
There's a lot of other considerations in terms of furnishings, because you're going to not allow people to be lounging, or at least not as closely as they might typically be. In fact, I think, as I understand it, right now, you're intending for people to sort of minimize their stay.
Yes.
In the early part, so that they're not picking up, say, a book or some other magazine or newspaper. We don't even have newspapers, and just sitting and lounging. I would suspect that's the reason, big reason, why your numbers, you know, even though, you know, for a week you did what you would normally do in a day, you're not getting that kind of traffic that people are just, you know, they want to come, they want to sit on the internet. You know, they want to read in the library, they need a quiet place to study, and so on, and so on. So, all of those opportunities are not, you know, and not to mention, you're not having a lot of programs. So.
Right. We did have a team meeting yesterday with department heads. And Jill is our Youth Services Librarian, and Jackie is our Communities, I don't remember what Jackie's exact title is, but she does all of our programming for adults, and she coordinates all of those programs. And both Jill and Jackie have a lot of reservations. They feel really uncomfortable with the idea of holding programs in-house. Jill, definitely, for the children's room, she says, she just doesn't see how she could do that. Kids are really hard to work with, to make sure they maintain the distance. There's a chance that, you know, maybe we might end up doing an in-person program for adults. But definitely, you know, October, November, not right away, and seeing what the regulations are. But we still can only have 50% capacity. So, you have six feet distance and 50% capacity. So.
You don't have large, open spaces, so that minimalizes what you can do.
Right.
Outside of the fireplace room, if you can clear out all the furniture.
Right. And even if we, even if we did that, then how do people browse the collection? It was one thing when we did that before, but now it's even a bigger issue. So, we are looking at what kind of interactive opportunities we can do. The Make and Take Kits that the children's room staff put together were very popular, very labor-intensive, but really popular. A lot of families are just so tired of this, you know, another thing for their kids to do online. So, they like the idea of picking up something physical and having kids do it, not necessarily having to watch another video thing. So, we were talking about that. And we were also talking about, could we do that kind of a thing for adults? Some kind of, our craft programs for adults were pretty popular. So, you know, could we do make and take? So, everybody's trying to think about, how do we do a better job at switching to this virtual world?
I think that's a great idea. I just, YMCA Newsletter is, just came, you know, they just started a program where you can borrow a fitness kit, essentially. You know, meaning weights and whatever you can carry, you know, equipment from the Y, and you get that for a week. And you can, and then they give you video instruction and so on, and how to, you know, do your own workouts. So, I think that's a good, that's a good idea. You know, you can do things that let kids and adults, all of us, do things, you know, hands-on. I think that's really good.
We've been trying to promote our Discover Kits. We've had them for a couple of years now, both our learning backpacks for kids, but then our Discover Kits for adults. We are going to try and focus homeschooling, highlighting our homeschooling resources, and trying to have some maybe question-and-answer livestream kind of a thing, because there are a lot of parents that are really wrestling with, are they sending their kids back to school? I'm hearing it from all different, all different friends, not just in Auburn, but in the central New York area. The schools have not released, I think Cato Meridian has released their reopening plan, but the other schools haven't. But I'm, I just, I think there's a lot of people that are going to be homeschooling.
Auburn, Auburn, right now, because we got a phone call today about it. Auburn is going on an A-B schedule. So, the As go in Monday, Wednesday, the Bs go in Tuesday, Thursday, and then Friday, everybody's virtual. So, in other words, kids are going in two days a week, and the rest of the time.
What do they do?
What's that?
The rest of the time, what do they do? Well.
Yeah, I know. But that's what I'm saying. I mean.
So, what could we do? So, that's something that we're really focusing on. How can we support, how can we support families and parents in this new environment? And I think we'll be seeing a lot more programs out of that. And again, not just virtual, but also what physical, interactive things can we provide? At the same time, being ready to shut down at any minute, because we might have to, right? So.
Lisa, have you talked about doing anything outdoors on the library grounds or any other spaces that might be friendly to the library?
We did. We have talked, well, we haven't talked about other spaces. We've talked primarily about our space. And Jackie and Jill both feel really uncomfortable, even with outdoor spaces. If you're doing children's program, keeping people, you know, spaced apart. And the other thing is just people walking by and joining in. That's kind of hard to control, even if we have registration and we have the right number of spaces, and, you know, it's all out there. Jackie, I think, is a little bit more open to that. And she's been talking about trying to do maybe a meditation group, because we've had, that was our very popular, our chair yoga and meditation groups were super popular. So.
I wondered, I was just using the Y as a model. I just tried one of their outdoor classes over at the Skinny Atlas Y, actually, today. And it worked pretty well. I mean, you go in, you get your temperature taken, you sign a form, a waiver, you know, they check you in time and all this stuff. So, it takes a little longer to check in. But they were able to kind of do it, you know, behind the Y, and they limit the number. And it was nice to do something live, you know. It was adults, not children, although they are running children's programs as well. So, I just was curious if that had been talked about, but it's.
Yeah, we, it's been, we've been talking about it, because our grounds are beautiful. Thank you, Dixie.
They are gorgeous. Oh, my God.
Yeah. It's beautiful. So, you know, how can we use it? And I'm really listening to what the people who do that are telling me, and why they feel uncomfortable. I'm open to it, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Lisa, I just had one question about the teams. You're saying there's two teams, and they're onsite every other week. So, are those teams getting the same hours total that they would normally get? And they're just doing it. So, they're like half.
So, if you, the week you don't, aren't scheduled to work, you can collect unemployment.
Okay, that was my, that's what I was asking.
Right. And, and the hours, even on the week you work, are not what they were.
Okay.
Because we just were open less hours. And that was part of my conversation with Sarah at Finger Lakes. So, we used to be open 57 hours a week. We're half that now. But I just don't, at this point in time, I, you know, I don't see that we can be open from 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. Yes, we're busy the 2 to 7 that we're open, but I won't have enough work, because we don't, we just don't have enough book traffic. So, it's that balancing act. I do have all employees doing professional development. Every person does approximately two hours a week, in hopes that we're getting to a spot where everybody will be comfortable with this service called Leaders Advisory. And then, then maybe I'll have extra work for people to do, because we're going to offer this new service of, we'll select books for you, or we're going to do a homebound delivery service. But that's very labor-intensive. So, that's the point of having everybody do this training.
In terms of.
Lisa?
Go ahead.
Yes.
Sorry. Going back to the staff, I know, we're sort of jumping from one thing to another here in terms of, you know, how to use the spaces and how to get people in. But I was thinking about the staffing earlier, because you mentioned that it's difficult. I thought I heard you say it's difficult in ways that you hadn't anticipated.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes. Yes.
Could you just expound on that a little bit more? And is there anything that we can suggest, we can do to help? I mean, is the staff nervous about having people come in and being around them? Are they uncertain about what their duties are? Are they nervous about learning the cross-training I know that you're trying to do a little bit of?
I think it's cross-training, and I think it's just the constant change, like minute changes. You know, so we, you know, in the past, your job was pretty well-defined. This is what you did. And now, we don't actually have a children's room anymore. The children's room staff never had to give out library cards. But now Kathy Kirk was one of our children's room staff, and now she's on this rotation, and she has to give out library cards. That's like a new thing for her, that she never had to learn. And so, everybody has to, everybody's like on that constant alert. Do I, do I have to tell people who wear their mask like this? Do I have to tell them that it has to go like this? And, you know, there's, there's that, we, how do I approach people? So, there's that level, I think, that has to do with a pandemic of what do I say? Even if it hasn't happened, if somebody, how do I prepare myself to have a, yeah, confrontation? So, I think that's the level of nervousness. I haven't, I haven't felt that people are worried about our procedures or cleaning, or about allowing people in the building. I feel like that's been okay. It's mostly, what do you expect me to do now? How do I do this thing? I've never done this before. This is a new way of doing things. And then, not only is it a new way of doing things, I'm going to slightly change it every day to react to whatever the circumstances are. And so, it's just very unsettling.
So, that means that's taking a lot of your time in dealing with everyone's issues, whatever they are.
Um, yes. I'm definitely feeling Dinette not being here. Dinette was a much better people person than I am. And so, I am working with Jill and Lee to redesign. Like, how do we, what do we need to do? How, what are the holes? How do we redistribute these duties? What works best? And I really think the sooner we get to that, I'd really like to work, like, have that in place September-ish, you know, have a staff training, a staff day, two staff days, because I have to split the time apart, and say, okay, here's our, here's our new structure. And I, I think that that'll make a difference. And one of those changes is having administrative support.
Right.
Right.
Right. I think very essential.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
So, just, just to recap, in terms of phasing, we're looking at the next phase, which is what the.
Leadered Access Service Level D.
Yeah, which is, which is outlined in the attachment that you gave us.
Right.
You're looking to do that sometime in, still in mid-September, is that correct?
I would like to do it in early September.
Okay. I mean, sooner is better if everyone's comfortable with that. But not any, not in August, at least. That's what we, no. So, early September, if trends continue the way they're going. The protocol is pretty well outlined in the, in this attachment. So, unless, you know, anybody has questions about it, you know, I don't know that we need to go through the item by item. Just in general, you're not going to encourage people to hang out at the library. Right? To basically, you know, I mean, you're not ushering people out the door, but you're also not encouraging them to pull up a chair and camp out for hours.
Right.
So, you can remove all the chairs.
Right now, they're pretty much stacked in the fireplace room. I had Bill do an inventory of all of our furniture, so we can, we can look at that, like, what could we put in storage, you know, so it's, we have more room to move around. Are there things, specifically in the children's room, that we're not going to be keeping the children's room furniture, because everything's included in the grant?
Right.
So, you know, what could we sell or donate, rather than store it? So, that'll be coming up in the next few months, trying to work through all of the furnishings in the children's room. But there's, there's, we have a lot of tables, like, a lot of tables. I'll share the inventory with you. Not just, I'm not talking about the historic architect-designed tables, not those, but all those other 1972 tables.
Anybody have questions about the reopening, next phase?
I'm just absolutely gobsmacked. I've been watching a lot of Antique Roadshow. Gobsmacked at how much detail you have in here. And I know that you had a template you've been looking at, but you're really applying it to this place and breaking it down. So, I hope, even though the staff is in a lot of anxiety about a lot of things, I hope this is somewhat of a reassurance to them, that it's right there to look at and go back to and build on. But it's a lot.
Right.
Oh, my God.
It is a lot. But I think, I think everybody's good. You know, everybody has input into it. Before we started the lobby opening, we actually, you know, as part of our staff training, we actually acted it out, you know? It was like, you're a greeter, you're a customer, you're a desk person. Okay, let's walk through it. What, do you see problems? Okay, let's tweak it. So, we have been doing that right along. Every week, it's like, okay, what worked this week? What were the big bottlenecks? What didn't you understand? How do we fix it? And then, we have a person in charge, team leader, for each shift, and we're trading off to, yesterday was my day, today Jackie. I'm like, hey, Jackie, we didn't have time to do the shelving yesterday. Here's what I found. Here's what worked really well. Here's, you know, somebody needed help with this. So, it's just ongoing learning. So it's just ongoing learning.
Well, I noticed there's one thing you've got highlighted because you have to have a mask and gloves. And it's going to be hard for people to remember to stop when they're helping somebody at the computer and put their gloves on before they approach them. So you've even got that worked in. You can easily see somebody asks you a simple question and you just kind of wander over and forget, so.
I'm I'm not requiring people to wear gloves because I'm just not requiring it. But I try to really encourage, if you choose not to wear gloves, wash your hands. You touched this, wash your hands. Because we, you know, especially at the circ desk, the sink is right there.
Yeah. Very good.
The use of hand sanitizer and so on will be pretty frequent as well. You're getting those great big gallon things?
Yeah, yeah, we have tons of that. There's a lot that are that have skin conditions, the chemicals are really harsh, being aware of that. And so whatever works for you, I'm not going to tell you. You know, if you know that you can't do that and who has allergies and who. There was this one woman who used to work here a long time ago who had multiple chemical sensitivities. And I I'm so glad she's not here because that would be that would be really hard right now. Like, how would I work through that? So.
Okay. Okay, ready to move on to construction updates? Can tell you that the building committee met and we had a couple of different items on the on the list, so they're included in the minutes. But just to recap, the children's room renovations, the design is proceeding. And we were expecting that we'll have at least a couple of times during the period while they're in production to have progress drawings, progress set so that we, as a as a committee and anybody who's interested, actually, can can look at them and comment and and such. Paul and Lisa Mays are coming to Auburn in August.
Yes. It's a Tuesday, like, I could tell you exactly what day.
It's it's the second week of August. But anyway, what we're looking to do is to get the construction documents out to bid in November. We should receive and bids, you know, in in probably mid-December and be able to award contracts so that a contractor can then begin mobilization sometime in January. I think it's a three to four-month construction period. And I I haven't heard anything different.
Paul had said he anticipates it would be done by the end of May.
Okay, all right, so maybe four to five months. Okay, all right. But well, I mean, yeah, okay, that's good, that's good. All right, so things are proceeding and everything we as we understand it, everything is still in place for the grant that we were awarded. We have not received the official official notification from the state, but to our knowledge, everything is proceeding. Once we do receive an official notification, there's 180 days, calendar days in which that project has to be completed. But because of COVID, that date has been extended. So I think we're all still okay with everything as as far as we know. Anything to add to that, Lisa?
No.
Okay. Lisa is putting together, working through the next construction grant cycle, the 2020 and 2021 New York State Labor Library Construction Grant. Amounts to, for our, for Finger Lakes, $350,000. And so we're going to apply for a portion of that. We are one of two, as we think right now, libraries that have that intend to make or finalize an application. The two projects that are on the table, one is the West Lobby renovations, which we are really happy, would happy to do. But the other one, and the more critical one, I suppose, certainly is the is the roof replacement. So as a result of that, the building committee agreed that we should pursue the grant with the roof replacement project in mind. We received an estimate from J and B Installations. They're a roofing company out of Skinny Atlas. So as part of the grant, we have an estimate from them. It's somewhere north of 800,000. Exact number, 800, 850. I think we're looking for a 50/50 match. In the meantime, I've also asked Bell and Spina, and I didn't, haven't told you this, Lisa, but I've asked Bell and Spina to come to get back to us with a proposal for doing the work.
Yes.
Dan called me a couple of days ago and said that they are, because of everything that was paused and now everything is is moving forward, that they're really booked and probably won't be able to do anything for us until after the first of the year. So I think it's a question of, you know, do we wait for them? Or do we reach out to other firms with the report in hand? And then, you know, go from there? So it might be worth exploring other other proposals in addition to the Bell and Spina, a Bell and Spina proposal.
So one question I would have, Larry, is is about the timing. So we submit it by September 1st. Finger Lakes reviews it and sent it, their recommendation to the state. And if they recommend that we get $300,000 out of their pot, that goes to the state. We still don't know, like, most years, I'm okay with that, you know, the state will get back to us and tell us in June what we'll get. But this year, that money, I think, is not as yet, right now, today, it's still there. You haven't heard differently. But I I would feel very uncomfortable starting a, you know, a project without hearing that from the state, unless the board is okay with, you know what? We might not get that $300,000. So is it a problem to, if if Bell and Spina isn't available until 2021?
I don't think it's a problem, no.
Because we won't, we won't hear from the state until unless they tell us they're cutting it. But we we probably won't hear until June.
Right.
Like, even now, for last year, we haven't gotten official word. We shouldn't have heard in June. But last year, we didn't hear until October for the idea lab. So I'm thinking we're going to hear in October for the children's room. So I just think we have.
We have time.
We have time, yeah.
Yeah, we we definitely have time. I know that what we wanted to do originally with this project was have the roof bid in sometime in 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 late winter and then start construction. But that was when we had a lot more assurance of our financing and where finance comes from. So, yeah, I think it's it's okay to wait. I told Dan it was okay to wait and that we weren't thinking we would want to proceed right away at any rate. So that's, but he did, he did, I mean, I think I think it would be best for them to continue because they did all of the work to begin with, so they know the project better than any other. And so we can, we can just keep keep them in the loop and we'll see what happens in in about, yeah, about four months, five, six months.
Yeah. So the other part of the roof project is Nancy. So.
You mean the foundation?
Right, right. And 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 I am going to need, whether, well, there's two parts to it. One, Larry did a fabulous job at doing the shipo submission. So that is the key right there, waiting to get, if shipo says, sure, go ahead, well, then, okay, we could go ahead. And if they say no, well, then we'll do the West Lobby because they're not going to say no to that.
Right.
But regardless, I do need permission from the foundation to do the lobby, if we do the lobby, or the roof, if we do the roof. And then there's the whole financial part as well.
Right. So so as I'm sitting here, listening to this, and I mean, not it's not the first time I've heard it, but, you know, you sort of have to reconstruct everything. Or at least I do every time I hear it. I guess for me, it's, you know, what comes first? What what do we need to have in order for the foundation to really take a look at all of this?
Well.
The the we have the Bell and Spina report. And now we have an estimate from the contractor, right, Larry?
Yes.
So what, so the, so what, so Bell and Spina would be doing what? I guess I'm sorry.
Okay, Bell and Spina is only, is only done conceptual and they've done the research.
Right.
Well, they they know what's there and they have an idea of, you know, how they how they would go.
Right, and we have that report, right.
So their next step would be to develop drawings from which contractors would offer bids. Right, so those drawings will take, I don't know, two to three months, maybe, once they get started in order to finish. And then, once they finish, then there's, you know, at least a month of bid bidding, a bid period. And then after that, we decide, you know, we've received the bids and then and then decide on awarding, on award of the contract. So if we backtrack and we say, well, all right, if we don't hear from the, assuming everything's a go, and we don't hear from the state, official notification from the state until, say, June next year, maybe we target a September construction period. Some something like that. And then we back up from there and decide, all right, then then we you know, August, and we have Bell and Spina start work in April or May.
So what you were talking about Bell and Spina doing those bid documents, that's what Paul Mays is doing for us for the children's room. That's $48,000.
Right.
So we can anticipate the expense for the roof would be a lot more.
I would think would be, you know, if it's an $800,000 project, I would guess, say, $80,000 thereabouts might be the the fee, just.
How much, I'm sorry, I'm.
About $80,000, maybe 10%.
Okay.
And that's just, that's just a guess at this point because there's a lot of detail involved in, you know, in in the removal and the repair, there's the skylight, there's masonry repointing, there's the, some of the rafters need to be stabilized. So this, there's a lot more than just, you know, flat roof. So that would be my guess. And I think that regardless of whether or not we get the grant, I think we've all agreed that the roof needs to be done. And so even if we give the thumbs up to, you know, the architect to proceed, say, in April or May, we'll have the documents, one way or another. And if we have to find a different way to finance because the state grant falls through, then then we have to find another way to finance it. But I think we've all agreed, meaning the trustees and and the foundation, that this is something that absolutely needs to.
Hold on.
Okay.
So what I need, at our August meeting, I need, that's the last board meeting the district has before we, I have to submit the DLD grant. So obviously, I'll send out, oh, whatever, you know, if we hear from shipo, we're, you know, you'll know which way we're going. And I will send information on both the roof or the lobby, depending. But I need, the board president has to sign a bunch of paperwork. The board has to have a resolution. I need permission from the foundation, so.
Like we've done before.
Right. I need the assurance that the funding is there for the grant match. So so I just want, I just want you to be aware that this is coming in the next six weeks.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll have to, aside from this meeting, Lisa, we'll have to.
Yeah.
Just one question about the grant. We think that the we think the other, the other library, the Aurora Library, is only asking for $25,000. I mean, do we, do we just say, okay, so then we're going to ask for the remainder, even though our estimate is more than that? And and then we just simply need to say, we, as a, there's, you know, the foundation will match that 325. Is that correct, Lisa?
I think you have to say that you have the money for the project.
For the entire project.
Right.
All right, okay, okay. I asked J and B Installations, by the way, to be conservative in their estimate. A lot of what they did was debase it and off of what they saw in the report. But the report had such a wide swing in it. It was somewhere between, I don't have the numbers, but 400 and some odd thousand to almost 900,000. That's, you know, so so we're trying to be, I think we're trying to be conservative. Whatever it is, you know, we're we're gonna, we're gonna have to design to that number. But, okay. So Lisa, you'll work with with the foundation on getting, and Nancy, you you'll work on getting the assurances.
Yep, so we'll be talking. And I'll, as soon as I hear one way or another from shipo, because that's an important part of this history, then then we'll know.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I think, did that go in last week? I don't remember when we did that.
Yeah, we submitted it on Thursday.
Okay, all right. So, okay. Any further discussion, questions about any, anything that we're looking at here? One of the things I will say is that that Mays, you know, will be still giving us an estimate or get, they have given documents to Bulley Associates?
Right, I have to follow up with Don because I haven't gotten that. So we don't even know what the quote is, but he's on high list.
All right, so so and if you need some help, I can call on that too. But they're providing us an estimate with the with the West Lobby based on schematics that, you know, Paul and Lisa put together. So we'll have that number as well moving forward. And, you know, we'll we'll spend our money somehow or another, right? Okay. Any any further discussion? Anything that we need to talk about with regard to construction updates? Construction? Questions? Hearing none. Then final item on the agenda is the referendum. And Lisa, we have some seats coming up in in the election?
We do. So Ginny probably has more information. We do, so Jenny probably has more information at hand.
So um, I can just go over, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at the minutes from the Board Governance Committee meeting. So we have three um, trustee positions um, on December's end, on December thirty-first, and it's Auburn, one in Auburn, one in Senate, one in Wasco, and that's Jim, Joe, and Meg. So um, I'm sorry about the feedback, I don't know if others can hear it, but Wes doing that, anyway, um, so we, I don't have the date written down here, Lisa, we had talked, talked about a tentative date for the election, just remind me what that is. Where's Lisa?
It's usually the last week, the last Tuesday in October. Uh, I did email our lawyer, Ellen, to find out about the rules around an absentee ballot, but also, we've always had our budget referendum, where we ask taxpayers to vote on an increase to the tax levy, which is a part of a budget. If we're, we're not going to ask for an increase to the tax levy, do, does the taxpayers still have to vote on our budget? So that was just a, a weird thing that I'm not sure of, um, so stay tuned for that part.
They probably do, I, I, I'll bet you they do. I mean, I'm thinking it wouldn't be any different from a school board, from a school district, you still have to approve that money, people's money's being spent, so I would guess you will, you will have to.
Whatever the rules are, so the last Tuesday, yes?
Yeah, speaking from an experience, yes.
Yes, okay.
Exactly like Jenny said, since the, the taxpayer's money is being spent for something, it has to be approved.
Okay. Alright, so, um, I, I, so I think we're still on target for the end of October then, and then I would, I think I do have to have a public hearing in September, fif- fifty days before the vote. Um, so I will uh, work with Jackie to get those dates out to everybody. It's when the trustee petitions are available.
Uh, remind us of the petition process, um, the timing of it.
It's usually the first week in September, last week in August, first week in September, you have to pick up a petition. I don't know, maybe I can mail it to people, maybe I could make, I don't, I'd have to look at what the rules are. And then you need ten signatures, and you usually have um, a, a two-week period to get them back to us.
That's how I remember it.
Yeah, something like that.
So, we, so one of the things the Board Governance Committee would like to do is to uh, encourage interest in people serving on our board as a trustee, and as we've talked about before, also, it's an opportunity to encourage people to serve on committees or in other volunteer committees. I don't know what it's going to look like next year, I don't, I don't really know. Uh, we can always use help, but in terms of hands-on, I don't know what that's going to look like, but one thing, you know, we've had open, well, we, it's been Lisa's had open houses before, um, where people could command and just, you know, informally, get a tour of the library, a little snack, so we may be doing something a little bit more creative this time, to kind of um, push out there, um, you know, how important service is, and I believe a little bit on Meg, have some ideas, and how to do that. Also, if you're running again, that would be awesome, you don't have to tell us today, I don't even know if there's a deadline for that, but um, uh, it certainly is still an opportunity to get more people um, interested. And I did compile a list, I haven't shared it with the committee yet, but I'll shoot it out to the Board Governance Committee. I basically pulled together a bunch of boards, just put their names in a Excel file, there's, it's like a hundred, hundred fifty names, a lot of them are repeats, of course, but um, we could look at that as a board and help us think of other people, and it might be a matter of us actually calling people and saying, hey, would you be interested in serving? Um, so that, that uh, will happen. Actually, now that I'm looking at the agenda, or the calendar, we have a meeting the end of August to talk about this, and maybe we should meet a little bit earlier, we want to get ahead of the time that people can pick up their petitions. So um, we're going to meet August twenty-ninth. It's hard to find a date, I know, Lisa, you have meetings like, I have trouble finding these dates, because you have meetings like every night, so maybe you could, after this meeting, you could tell us what days you're available, and talk to our board, or I mean, our committee. Um, anyway, so what else am I looking at here on the agenda for the vote? Yeah, so we'll get the date on the calendar and do it timeline backwards from that, and our committee will set up a meeting, and uh, we will ask for help from trustees, but it's really help in finding names, you know, nudging, helping us search people.
Okay.
What else, what else on that, Lisa?
I'll get the draft calendar of all those dates out to you guys by the end of this week, so that, you know, working our way back um, from the, the last Tuesday in October, you know, when things would fall, I think that just helps to have that.
Yes, yeah. And also, it'll be helpful to know about the absentee or mail-in.
Yep.
That's going to be, that's something we have to do ahead of time too, and that, that has a cost associated with it.
Well, it depends on, it depends, um, whether, I don't know, I, I'm waiting here from the lawyer, but um, I'm not sure what the rules are around absentee ballots. I know that the school bo, the school board, the school district buys that, they have to pay for that list, but if we just, I, I think we could, because we conduct our, our own election, we might be able to say, if you want an absentee ballot, this is the process without buying that list.
Okay, yeah.
Sure, so that's why I need legal.
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay.
Alright. Um, anything else to discuss today? Yes, no?
I just want to say I appreciated the treasurer's report, it looked great, we need to talk about it, but.
Yeah, it gets, yeah, no.
Yeah.
Okay, our next Board of Trustees meeting will be the twenty-fifth, August twenty-fifth at four PM.